One of the things is that it'll take three town council members to grant someone or to appoint someone to be the town manager for a three-year stint. And then they can extend that for three more years, for a total of six, two turns at the helm. This will be political, and there's just no doubt in my mind that this can be abused. I'm in vote to put this on up for an election, but I still think that the power of who you wish to vote, that George Bush was elected twice, Barack Obama was elected twice, and that was by the populace of the United States, the voting people, Electoral College if you want to get that technical. But the people voted them in. You may agree with those people, you may disagree with those commander in chiefs. I still believe this decision belongs to the voters of the town, not Smithville. But if it's going to go for ballot for $7,500, I also support that. And let's put the status once and for all for the second time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Does anyone else like to speak?
Mr. President, I just had a few people ask if this will be the only public hearing, or is there scheduled another one? Because two more?
I thought you had to have two by charge.
I just didn't know when that will be. Because some folks had to leave because of the length of time spent on the other agenda. I may ask if there would be another, and I didn't know when.
I don't think it's scheduled.
Oh, we could schedule it.
Let me just schedule. Next. Okay, Councilman Zelensky.
I would like to say, I read you the document numerous times, the reprints it was great. I personally, as a resident, would support looking manager. I'll let the voters decide that. However, my only concern is I just ran in a special election. Does anyone know the number of the voter turn out for my special election? It was 828 people. I 100 percent, I was not voted by the will of the people. There was 828 people that showed up. I support it. I'll vote for it. I want the voters to vote for it. But I don't feel that a special election is the best thing. I really don't. Eight twenty-eight is not majority. I'd like to go back and what I will do, and I promise I will do between now and the next meeting we have on a public hearing is, I will go back and ask the town clerk to get us numbers for how many people turn out for presidential primaries, as well as townwide primaries, to see if we put on, if we vote to put on the ballot at time of the primary, if it will be a majority. I would have a problem running concurrent if we're getting the number of voters out there. But again, if it's going to be 828 people, I don't support it. Even if I was to win, I don't support it. It's not the will of the people at that point. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Does anyone else like to speak?
Mr. President, could we, I just want, I think, because I want everybody else, but if we can, you've asked if anyone just to speak.
I want to speak.
You want to speak?
Yeah, I want to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just trying to sketch what's up.
The other thing I want to say is that we have a choice. We can continue, we can continue with a professional to run our community, or we can go back to amateur. In this day and age, the complexity of government, it behooves a community to have a professional administrator. That individual has the skill set to keep the town, keep us out of fiscal problems, and at the same time to keep us out of legal ones. And those can be very expensive. I'm sure Mr. Lombardi knows those, that's for a fact. But again, it's, all I wish to do is to place this before the voters. You can vote for it, or you cannot vote for it. And whatever the will of the people be, will so be it. And we'll have to schedule another hearing, and there'll be other people hopefully will come and give their opinions upon what they would like to see, and we'll move forward after that. And we'll find out, I guess Wednesday night, if we'll be allowed to put it on the, put it on a ballot, presidential ballot, or if we have to have a separate election beforehand. Because what happens come June, declaration of candidacy papers have to be taken for all offices, whether it be a school committee, whether it be for town council or town administrator. So we would like to try to have that done before, before the June deadline. This way, we won't have to have a linked-up town administrator, and then move into a town manager. So that's all I have to say on this. Thank you.
Okay, Paul, do you want to schedule one here?
Yeah, just for the council, we consider the next council meeting, if I may ask another question. How does that agenda look?
It's just a regular name. There's nothing in particular on the rundown.
Okay, so that's what the 20, what date was that? Twenty first? Twenty first, I make a motion, we continue the public hearing to December 21st.
Motion by Councilman Zelensky, second by Councilman Sully. Is any further discussion?
Would it make more sense to possibly do it on Saturday?
No.
And get Christmas.
Well, not that Saturday, but to have more people come out and give their opinion. I want to hear more.
I have tons of others. No, I, I don't know what.
Because ten people speak about it, and in account of, what, 10,000 voters? Nine thousand?
You know, it's continuity. We have our meetings on Monday. People know, some people know when our meetings are, some don't. I just think we should do it on a regular scheduled town council meeting on Monday. We start right up at the beginning of our agenda, so people that, there are legitimate time constraints, people have to get home with their kids, I get it. Let's put it, it's the first thing that Monday, let's have folks weigh in and give us their opinion. That's just my thought.
I'm amenable to it. I just didn't know if maybe Saturday made more sense for some of our residents to come out.
Well, you know, you may have merit there, just that I, I don't know, I have family commitments and if the will of the council wants to meet on Saturday, I'll be here, I'll go with the majority, like, you know. You know what? Anybody that's interested in meeting on Saturday, just send me an email, pswalensky@aol.com, and I'll certainly be amenable to that. I haven't heard anybody mention it, so.
Really concerned with the will, will the constraints coming up as we approach, you know, winter session here? And that, I just assume basically all things are fresh in people's minds to get, bring them out as soon as possible, give deliberations from the state board if it's possible, or not. And if it isn't, we can make that known then, and we won't have to go back to a drawing.
Mr. President, I'm thinking of another option to the newsletter that I send out, if we could put, just, it would be anecdotal in nature, it wouldn't be scientific or anything. A one-question survey, whether or not people would come out. And at least it will give you another group of people that may not be able to come at night, may have other commitments, and, you know, they'll quickly, and they can only go once, you know, it's a constant contact.
Survey monkey.
So we could do that, yeah. I mean, that would be an option if you want, it's just another way to get some feedback, but just a thought.
That's an excellent idea.
I'm buying into it. Yeah.
Might work.
Okay, so don't email me. Enter the survey.
Yes, Mrs. Vanna?
I'm just going to say much like the town administrator was going to say, although it's only because the 21st, I got to be honest with you, I don't even know what's going on with the schools, but I can guarantee it's a concert, or something's going on. And maybe through the keeping you informed, there's a way that she could, that the town administrator could say, if you have concerns, please don't forget to reach out to, or some way, or can all go into a mailbox. You know, it could be a yes, no, but it also could be a way for her to just write out three sentences and say, you know what, I think this is a really good idea, I can't be there, but I wish, you know. Some way to get, because I'm afraid you're not going to have a lot, whether you do it on Saturday or on the 21st, it's, it's going to be crazy.
Yeah, so I would absolutely be amenable to do it during our next meeting with the survey going out.
Okay, so we're back to the 21st?
Sure.
Okay, still second.
You seconded it? Okay, we got a motion, we're going to second.
Second, but also include that, that survey thing? Survey monkey?
Survey monkey is usually what we use, but she can do it however she does it.
All right, okay. Okay, motion by Councilman Zelensky, second by Councilman Sully, to have the, along with the survey done, be sent down through the town letter, or is it through a separate entity?
No, we'll do it.
Okay.
And just for clarification, surveys, just to see if folks want to meet on Saturday to continue the public, correct?
No, the survey would be TA versus TM?
Oh, I don't know about that.
Why not?
Electronic election?
Not everybody gets that survey.
Huh?
Not everybody gets our newsletter.
There's a lot, there's a lot of reasons why not.
Yeah, but most people don't show up. I think more people probably get our newsletter than, do you have stats on your?
That could be skewed, though. Yeah, that's why.
I thought that.
It's not an actual election, it's just.
I thought that it was to schedule another meeting. You know what? I'd be amenable to have a third public meeting, if there was enough on the schedule that people wanted to have Saturday meeting. I'd come in. But to survey people electronically, whether they want a TA or a TM, I.
I honestly don't see the problem with that.
Right, I'm different.
So, talking about the 21st?
Yes. That was the motion, to continue it to the public hearing, to the public input.
Can I have a question? I didn't see it on the town website, and I looked for it, but maybe I didn't look carefully enough. Did the language that's being proposed get posted to the town website like it was supposed to? What's it under?
I have to check. I have a link on the town.
Well, maybe you could put a link to that in your newsletter.
You could put it on the main page, is there anywhere on the main page?
Sure. What? I don't think, I couldn't find it.
No, I know it was on the homepage, but we could at least put on the homepage, it's there where people go to it.
And maybe in the newsletter, you could put a link to the language or something.
All right. Roll it. Okay. Madam Clerk, vote for her, please.
Ms. Alves, yes, this is Nada.
Yes.
Mr. Sully.
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes. Under all business, discussion by council board of action of revised contract with energy consultant, Mrs. Hamilton, authorization to signature.
If I have Mr. Dash here, who had wanted to speak to you again about possibly revising his original contract, he has some ideas, and then from this meeting, will take back what you recommend, and that'll be the end.
Good evening. Thanks for having me again. I know this is going so late, so I will do as possible, as you almost likely recall, at the past meeting, we looked at who by that contract, which currently is a project, a project contract, on a monthly retainer, and concerned that we're very good with the council, were there enough projects to justify this merger. We went back and looked, just between six to nine projects that we're going to potentially work on on behalf of the town, but let me probably state something that I think that perhaps might have been as clear in previous presentation. Part of the reason to switch to project by project to a monthly contract is for us to be more proactive, in reactive to items that come up that we may or may not plan for. So for example, between last meeting and this meeting, actually last Wednesday, the state, particularly the general treasurer's office, introduced a new energy fund, a $25 million fund solely for municipal buildings and projects, something that we didn't know, we didn't see, come, that no one saw coming. We were all, by, for meeting on Wednesday, we, so that's a situation of a project that I did not have on the list last time, but it's something that we want to be responsible to, on behalf of the town. That being said, I understand that monthly contractors, it'd be a little less defined, and a little more, well, flak, that term, risky on your part, because you don't know if we're going to fill the pipeline with all the projects. So what I wanted to recommend is, is we'll simply stick with you project by project, if that's what you're comfortable with, obviously you already passed it, that's just fine. If we look at the change in fiscal scope, it's not significant. Well, what is significant, what we do want to incorporate as a change is, the scope of work for us to do on actually raising the dollars for projects that you're looking to do. And that was the second addition to the revised contracts, if we, again, we would charge a percentage fee for any dollars that we're solely responsible for raising. And we put in the language like we talked about last meeting, you know, it's, we don't charge fees for anything that we're collaborating on, or piggybacking on, or any other activities that you're already, already doing, it's solely for the work that we do. So I think we simplified it, we just said, look, we'll, we'll stick with the project by project, and we'll check in with the council periodically, but be it monthly, quarterly, or whatever you decide, so we can give you updates as to what's going on, and you can gauge how the project by project is going. The only change we made that we actually incorporated in the scope of work for us to do, raising of capital for projects, because there are some short-term opportunities, as I just said, there's a new efficient building fund off of the treasurer's office that might buy some great low-cost capital opportunities for the town, and that's just work that we, that's not covered under our contract right now that we would look to add. And again, it doesn't cost the town anything unless we're successful and actually raise you, obviously more than, we'll, we'll, we charge, we only charge if we're successful. So the town's not at any liability, you know, that we don't perform.
Any questions?
And I see some of you looking, but I was notified at the beginning of the meeting that you might not have gotten the revision that I just represented to you, so I'm not sure where, where the communication breakdown happened, but, you know, I, however you guys want to see, I'm just happy with it, assuming you do want.
No, we received the letter in our package, it was the date, November 6th.
November 2nd.
That was, I think, that was directed, we, we had half of it. So that was the, that was the contract that, that you had questioned on at the last meeting. So looking at that, what we would simply say is that we would eliminate the discussion about the monthly retainer from that contract, and only retain the, the new scope of work for the project financing work.
Okay, that was my, this was the original contract, right?
Yeah, this, I'm saying, no, it's changed though.
Our original contract was only for projects. So as we negotiated the solar landfill, that's a project that, that we did, we weren't asked to do any of the project financing work. So that revised contract reflects two things. One, moving from project to, project to project to monthly, and two, the new scope of the project financing, which is in there. What we're saying is that, based on the comments I've occurred, we'll simply scratch out the month-to-month, and keep the existing projects and projects that'll have a problem with that, that'll continue working, just as fine, but we'll add the new scope of the, doing what we need to raise you guys the capital for projects that approach.
What, may I, Mr. Sully? What I see in front of me is exactly what we discussed, $2,500 a month, per month, for 12 months. And nothing, what was in our package, I don't think that anything has changed, from how verbally you're saying to us, we're doing project by project, which I'm content with this suggestion, you did a great job on the last one. It was just us committing ourselves $2,500 per month, not knowing if the cost benefit analysis would kind of say this was worth doing.
What I'm saying is, I have two things in your package, what you told me, why I believe is in your package, is the same document, the same version from last time, which it shouldn't be, the version that you should have, that should have, yeah, the version that should be in the package today, should have scratched out all of the month-to-month, we're not even entertaining that, we're just adding the new scope that for the town.
Mr. Dash, if you want to come up with a different document, different understanding about this, I'll certainly entertain looking at it, but right now, I'm looking, what we have in our package, nothing has changed, considering what we talked about in back executive session, so this is a matter of public record, and if you wish to submit something different, I'll definitely entertain it, because I think your services, from your past services, you're certainly going to provide a lot of benefits to the town, but right now, what we got, for whatever reason, is not moving as well.
Again, I don't know what the, I know, usual, but, and, you know.
Do you want to take?
I decided to stay, if I ever, if I don't want to watch these nights, so I can have this conversation, and then if I know what our thoughts are, or if you have any comments on, on the votes, that idea, I'd be on the happy hearing, so that, whatever we get in the next time your, your phone comes over, okay?
Yeah, that's what confused me, is when I got my packet Friday, I was reading this and saying it's absolutely the same exact, last time, and then you started talking about going away from the month-to-month $2,500, going per, per project, which.
I'm already, I'm already comfortable with the project by project.
Right, exactly, and, and that was a concern of this council, we spent $30,000, $1,000 going, how many projects was going to be there? And I would be more comfortable with the project-to-project versus the month-to-month, but I'd have a chance to review that, because we still have the original proposal in front of us.
What I'm saying is, we wouldn't change.
So the contract.
Our contract.
The contract we're in with you right now is, the way it would stay.
It would stay.
And then we would add that 10% for anybody's you bring in for us.
That's the only change we've made to the contract.
Yeah, we, we don't have a contract. We have an understanding, you were hired to do a project. Do we have a contract? I mean, apart from, yes, that is a contract, for the project. I get it. But, but we don't have an ongoing contract. We're going, we're going to go look at if we can articulate point by point, by project, and we can look at it.
We have an agreement that each new project that the town wants us to work on.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, so we just want to write that up, and we can look at it, because this, this confused me when I was looking, that hasn't changed.
Mr. Dash, basically what you're telling us is just to basically strike out the fee schedule, and leave the, leave the amount of total value of the projects?
Right. I want a clear document, Mr. President.
We want to provide you with a clean.
Yes, a public record document.
Yep.
So can we continue this one, too?
You bet.
Can I make a motion, continue this one, December 21st, if you want to be a busy day?
That motion is getting bigger and bigger.
Motion by Councilman Zelensky, second by the chair, continue this to the 21st of December for our next, uh, council meeting?
Yes.
All the favors, Madam Clerk, vote for her, please.
Alves, yes, this is Nada.
Yes.
Sully. Mr. Bush.
Yes. Discussion by Council Board of Action regarding lights, nice coming from Buffalo Wild Wings, Mr. Zelensky.
Mr. President, I'm sure you've all been copied on the Riveras and their neighbors' concerns about outgoing lights, dumpsters, vacuuming, sweepings, I'm going to let them address this, there was a, Administrator Hamilton sent out a bullet point of all the issues that were over there, I'll let the Riveras speak. I saw some of your friends left earlier, so they couldn't, they're going to get that.
Good evening. Unfortunately, none of our neighbors could be here. They have a mother that's quite ill, so they will be there. I want to thank you for everything you've done for us, the lights that has been addressed, the trash. The only problem we're having now is with vacuuming. They, they tend to vacuum the parking lots between 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning. The, it sounds like a jet engine when they're vacuuming, and if they could, there's no reason why they can't do it in the morning before they open at 11:00. That's the problem.
That's the one issue right now.
Right now, that's the only issue, we have the vacuum, and if you take a vacuum, or not vacuuming, a Swiss, very sweet, the street, just a room, you're talking maybe 60 RPMs, which is the revolution of the wheel, the process, which is 60 revolution for one minute, versus that engine, that's a vacuum, that's sucking all that vacuum, like, if you put a shop vac in your house versus a regular vacuum, you're still going to hear the difference. Well, this one, it's got a turbine, and that thing's cranking at least, at least between 1,200 to 2,000 RPMs per minute, and that is loud, very loud.
It's a noise issue.
Yes, it is.
So, may I, I, I didn't know it was outside.
Yes.
When you sent me the email, I called them again and said, stop vacuuming, it's so loud.
Outside.
I thought you didn't say outside, oh, that's a whole different ballgame.
Yeah, I knew it, from outside, I mean, it's a, it's a regular boom.
Yeah.
We won't be able to hear, but with this, with the turbine figure, it is loud.
Yeah, I think Buffalo Wild Wings wants to be included, business maybe.
They do, they, they saw the list, and redone everything.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it was long, all we need to do is just articulate, no noise, you know, after 8:00 at night till 7:00 in the morning, let people rest.
Follow the noise audience.
Follow the noise audience, it's not hard. And Mr. Rivera, and Ms. Rivera, if that noise, madam administrator, could you send a check or mail to the police department if the noise audience is, I know they know this, but just to reinforce it, that if the Riveras call, or a neighbor calls, saying that they're out there making extreme noise at nighttime, that the police write them a citation, then they end up in our municipal court to explain this. I mean, this, this, it shouldn't get that far, this seems like an easy fix.
And that's new, right?
Yeah, it's new.
This is not something that's been going on and hasn't been fixed.
All the only issues, they want to farm, they don't have.
Yeah, they should everything else.
We just have to.
I know, it's kind of strange, I can. Never occurred to me.
What else, Ed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want the public to know that the Riveras gave us, I don't know, what is that, chocolate?
Chocolate, honey, strawberries.
Wow, would somebody do me a favor and take mine, so I don't have to go five miles?
And also, there's some pineapple.
Yeah, thank you, Riveras.
Thank you, Hollywood, Hollywood.
Okay, and the new business, discussion with Council Board of Action, resignation from planning board, Mrs. Roberts.
Mr. President, I would like to accept Dr. Roberts' resignation from the planning board, to follow up with a letter of thank you for her service to the town, and she was a great asset on the planning board. It's a motion to accept it, to send her a letter of thank you.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Zelensky, second by Councilwoman Nada. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, vote for her, please.
Alves, yes, this is Nada.
Yes.
Sully. Mr. Bush.
Yes. Okay, discussion by Council Board of Action, appointments to boards and committees. Hello. It's the, this one. Just to raise that one, please. Yeah, I guess, I guess, this would be for reappointment for one, three-year term that expires 12/1/2018, would be, I guess, John Zabron, who's currently serving under, he wants, seeks reappointment.
Mr. President, I'll make that nomination.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Zelensky, second by Councilman Sully, reappointed John Zabron to the project committee. Madam Clerk, vote for her, please.
Alves?
Yeah.
Mrs. Nada?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. President, before we go forward with this, may I say something that our boards and commissions, you know, we heard the dialogue earlier this evening regarding town manager, town administrator, we are only, the town administrator is only as strong as the people that she appoints to the, to head of the departments, and this town council is only as strong as the people that we appoint to serve on our committees. That being said, there were instances in here where, this is not, this is not directed at Mr. Zabron, because he served us loyal and faithfully, but there's instances in here where people should be recognized for their commitment, and as we get to those, and going above and beyond, because it's not always what it seems, who should get reappointed, and what, what position's opening, but I just wanted to preface it, because we'll see what we get there, I'll make motions, and if I say, what? What are you doing? It goes contrary to what you've been saying, so, I just wanted, I know it's confusing, I'm not confused, I just know where I'm going, but it's kind of hard to articulate at this point. We need to recognize these folks that have been serving, and appoint them back on if they wish to be serving. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Councilman Zelensky. Second is the historical district commission, three-year chairman expires 12/1/2018. First is currently served on the board is Daniel Hunt Kucher, looks to be reappointed.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Councilman Zelensky, second by the chair, to reappoint Daniel Hunt Kucher to the historic district commission. Any further discussion? Hearing that, Madam Clerk, vote for her, please.
Alves, yes, this is Nada.
Yes.
Mr. Sully. Mr. Bush.
Yes. With the three-year no hearing board.
Now, we still have two other historic districts.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to reappoint Jeff Harris for a three-year term that expires December 1st, 2018. He has sent in an email, and would like to be reappointed.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Nada, second by Councilman Zelensky, to reappoint Jeffrey P. Harris to the historical district commission. Any further discussion? Any further discussion, hearing on Madam Clerk, vote, vote, please.
Salz, yes, Mrs. Nada?
Yes.
Mr. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Bushet?
Yes. The other item is to reappoint the historic district commission is Christian D. Resendez, who's currently on the board, and the chair motion, and the chair wishes, motions to reappoint him as well, to the historic district commission, the three-year term that extends twelve one eighteen.
Second.
Second.
Motion by everybody, motion by everyone?
Yeah.
Mrs. Alz, yes, Mrs. Nada?
Yes.
Mr. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Bushet?
Yes.
Okay, now, with juvenile hearing board, three-year term that expires twelve one, twenty eighteen, individual to be reappointed, there's two individuals.
You have a date on your, I'm sorry, you're taking off the gender, okay, I'm looking at board vacancies, thank you.
There's three individuals, John Sutherland, Maureen Donnelly, and, that's it, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, unceremoniously, but I would like to nominate both to be reappointed.
I will.
Mr. Soli and Miss Donnelly.
Okay, motion by Councilman Zawinski, second by Councilwoman Nada, any further discussion, hearing on Madam Clerk, vote, vote, please.
Salz, yes, Mrs. Nada?
Yes.
Mr. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Bushet?
Next, that is Parks and Recreation Commission, appointed by town council, town administrator. No, no, there isn't, okay.
That's a, it's a plan for the first.
Okay. Do you have an appointee to the Parks and Recreation, uh, town administrator?
I do not.
You do not, okay, we'll skip that one. Item number five, personnel board, one's a two-year term that expires twelve one seventeen, and there's a three-year term that expires twelve one eighteen. Chair moves to.
No, no, no.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to appoint Deana Finnegan to the personnel board. Sure, she serves as an alternate down on the planning board, I believe.
I have a problem with that, but we have two people that, what I'm looking at, wait. We got one, one, one two-year term and one three-year term, and then we have the personnel board, we currently have two people that are serving, asking to get reappointed, Suzanne Burnier and Robert Gurnon. Two-year for Suzanne Burnier and three-year for Robert Gurnon, if I'm reading this correctly, so.
So there's no.
Well, you, your purview to nominate whomever you wish, but you have two people that have already emailed it, do you have copies? Okay, so.
The only reason I would do that is that sometimes Mrs. Monsouk, Burnier, is in Florida half the year, so sometimes you have to make substitutions, just a thought.
Okay, is it in the charter, so are you saying that Mrs. Finnegan would be, what's the word?
Alternate?
Alternate?
Yes.
Is that within the charter to do, I have no problem with that, I'd love to have her on board.
Probably not, in the charter, but.
It's not in the charter, right, so we can do.
But it's in the charter, I think it would hopefully be if they had more than three appearances, correct?
That's usually, what we usually send out, or at least I call people from what they know, that, and then if they don't have another interest, and that's a way out sometimes.
So, this is basically the TA's appointment with approval from town council, are you saying, I'm not trying to put you in this, you want, you want to, you want to do it at another date, you want to do it now?
Yeah, let's do it at another, make it easier that way, go ahead. Make it seem like my aunt.
Last year, I had one over, and I'm like, who is absent and who is present? We don't always have monthly meetings, because there might not be any, but I mean, so Mrs. Burnier has not missed three meetings, and I know she would like to stay, to continue to stay on.
Okay.
Okay, so you're going to nominate her?
I'm going to wait.
You're going to wait?
I want to talk to these folks individually.
Okay, so you want to wait on both of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move forward to the next meeting.
Sure. Are you not doing Mr. Burner? What about, what about, who? Because Mr. Belzarian is going to Calico in January. Excuse me, Mrs. Raffa Wenzel, next personnel board meeting?
Uh, next Monday night.
Next Monday.
Okay, well.
Of course.
Mr. Gurnon should stay on, he was very.
He's also on the juvenile.
Very interested, and he's very good, as far as his involvement with the town. Okay, Mr. Gurnon, I would like to reappoint Mr. Gurnon, he has requested that, and I would like to provide that to you as my nominee.
Mr. President, hearing the town administrator's nomination.
Two years, okay.
Thank you. Mr. Gurnon is the three-year, so are you moving him to the two-year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that.
Mr. President, hearing the town administrator's nominee, appointed, I would like to make the motion that the town council approves the town administrator's appointment to personnel board, Robert L. Gurnon, for two years.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Zawinski, second by Councilman Soli, any further discussion, hearing on Madam Clerk, vote, vote, please, on Mr. Gurnon?
Salz, yes, Mrs. Nada?
Yes.
Mr. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Bushet?
Yes.
Planning board.
Mr. President, I would like to make the motion to appoint Lucian Benoit for a five-year term of the planning board.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Zawinski, second by Councilman Soli, I'm Lucian Benoit for the five-year term, ending twelve one twenty.
Roll, roll, vote, please.
Mrs. Alz?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Nada?
Yes.
Mr. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Bushet?
Yes.
Okay, there are two other, let's see, okay, Cynthia Robert just gave us a letter for resignation from the.
Mr. President, for the completion of the one five-year term that expires on December 1st, 2016, I would like to nominate Deana Finnegan. She is currently, right now, the first alternate with a one-year term.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilwoman Nada, second by Councilman Zawinski, for Deana Finnegan to complete the, one of the five-year terms.
Yeah, completion of the one five-year term that is vacant by.
Twelve one sixteen.
Yes.
There's motion and a second on the floor, Madam Clerk, vote, vote, please, on Deana Finnegan.
Mrs. Alz?
Yes.
Mrs. Nada?
Yes.
Mr. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Bushet?
Yes.
Congratulations, Deana. You just got more to do.
I'd like to, I'd like to nominate David Punchak, to move up to first alternate?
I'll second.
Second, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, his, his term is going to expire twelve one sixteen, it's a one-year term, and Madam Clerk, vote, vote, please.
Mrs. Alz?
Yes.
Mrs. Nada?
Yes.
Mr. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Bushet?
Yes.
So that leaves.
We'll still need that to go up to the second alternate.
We have to go up to the second alternate.
Yep.
Madam Administrator, would we be able to advertise that we need a second alternate one-year term that expires December 1st, 2016, for planning board?
Let's move on to number seven, Public Safety Commission, appointed by the town council.
Mr. President, make the motion to approve Sean Russell for a three-year term to Public Safety Commission.
Second by the chair, any further discussion, hearing on Madam Clerk, vote, vote, please, on Sean Russell?
Salz?
Yes.
Mrs. Nada?
Yes.
Mr. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Bushet?
Yes.
And we redevelop an agency, two five-year terms that expire twelve one, 2020, two people, here's one, two.
I'll take an individual, Mr. President.
Okay, well.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to appoint John J. Gibbons III for a five-year term and redevelop an agency.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Zawinski, second by Councilman Soli, on Mr. Gibbons, Madam Clerk, vote, vote, please.
Salz?
Yes.
Mrs. Nada?
Yes.
Mr. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Bushet?
Second is completion of one five-year term that expires twelve one, 2016, I believe it's Mr. Bellows?
Are you saying no, Madam Administrator?
I am.
Okay, you care to elaborate?
I'm sorry, I'm just kind of a little embarrassed, only because he really has not attended any, any meetings that I'm aware of, maybe one, we have to check, we have to check that.
And, and, you know, I have realized that you've known Fred since he was a young man, and you were champion for him, but he hasn't met, met the meetings.
Right.
And thank you for being honest upfront, and, and, yeah, so, his name's there if anybody wishes to nominate him.
Going once.
Going twice. Going twice. Rapko, what are you doing, you got time for this?
Just kidding.
Yeah, just, just notice, I have your highlights. Oh, my, my side, want to come back?
Okay.
So we'll have to meet more town members.
Yeah, so, Madam Administrator, that would be two vacancies in redevelopment. For, at the highest.
One or two.
Two, you have the one five-year term, and the other one's the completion of the term for one year.
I miss it, we go up the alternative.
No, no, it's right here.
No, it's basic.
Redevelopment, right?
John, John Gibbons, we just appointed for five more years, the other is going to be empty, so, ah, we're getting two empty.
He just might resign.
Oh, okay, I'm a little slow, thank you. Okay, so on the last.
Well, we have a completion of a five-year term that's for one year.
You have a five-year term, it's a sewer commission, expires twelve one twenty, we have Attorney William A. Dory IV, chair moves, any appointees to that position?
Second.
Motion by the chair, second by Councilman Zawinski, for Mr. Dory, any further discussion, Madam Clerk, vote, vote, please.
Salz?
Yes.
Mrs. Nada?
Yes.
Mr. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Bushet?
Yes.
zoning board.
Mr. President, if I may, I've had the opportunity to observe Robert Negerian, he's currently the second alternate on the zoning board. I think that he's also very, very active and involved in the ad hoc committee, the main commissioner, Peter, I've observed him at zoning board meetings. I'd like to nominate him to be the five-year appointee to the zoning board.
She says.
Do you have anything from him in that?
Uh, yes, actually, we have an email from him, and I called him today, he actually spoke to me at ad hoc meeting, he said he wanted to get more deeply involved in zoning. I said, appointments are coming up, he said, yeah, I'd like to be a full voting member, I said, okay.
Excellent.
Uh, so, I, I think anybody's, Council Soli, you attended one of those ad hoc committees, and Mr. Negerian was chairing it, and.
Oh, he did his actual job chairing, then you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've watched him on zoning, he's phenomenal, he really is.
So I'd like to make the motion to appoint Mr. Negerian to the five-year term, full voting member on the zoning board.
Okay, motion by the, a motion by the Councilman Zawinski, second by the chair.
Second. I want to be a second on that, too.
For Mr. Negerian for the five-year term, Madam Clerk, vote, vote, please.
Mrs. Alz?
Yes.
Mrs. Nada?
Yes.
Mr. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Bushet?
Yes.
Mr. President, on the first alternate, Mr. Vincent Markantonio served in that position, I tried to talk him to be a full-time voting member, he's very comfortable being an alternate. I'd like to make the motion that Mr. Markantonio continue as the first alternate on the zoning board.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Zawinski, second by Councilwoman Nada, for Mr. Markantonio as first alternate, any further discussion, hearing on Madam Clerk, vote, vote, please.
Salz?
Yes. Mrs. Nada?
Yes.
Mr. Soli?
Yes.
Yes, well, yes, yes. Second, uh, second alternate, one-year term expires twelve one sixteen. One gentleman slipped on the list. Mr. Pasquale. All right, here's that, eight, eight, dash, we'll move forward. That's it, right? And executive session, and we're out, General Lawrence, forty-two, forty-six, five, sub eight, section two, section pertaining to collective filing, female litigation award sessions pertaining to collective filing or litigation. Number one is the introduced jurisdiction award and waste code agreements with the Sablet Sock, and two is the potential litigation. Chair moves us to go into executive session.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Nada and Councilman Zawinski. Well, if you may, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? To executive session.